The full is meeting in the planning board of corporate. I've got three items that I would like to ask the members to add to the agenda for today. The first is we have a request for comments from the zoning board for an accessory apartment at 25 Fair. But I'd like to add that to the correspondence section. We vote on all three of them together, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Let me just, I'll get through them. The second is the village board has asked for the planning board administration issuing a memo with respect to potential code amendments for 134, or actually any part of the code. Because there are, they're going through amendments for chapter 100, which is short-term rental. And it's a relatively involved process to amend the code. So they wanted to see if we had any other thoughts we wanted to share with them. So I'd like to add that to the for business section for today to discuss. And then finally, give everyone an update on the fee in lieu of park schedule, fee schedule updates to the village board. They've done that earlier this week. Add that to reported members. So I get a
Motion.
Motion, yeah. I'll make a motion to add all three new items to business.
One second.
Okay, we'll get to this. Do we have the June 27?
They were like 99% done, but I didn't want to bring it choppy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll take it next time.
All right. There's no corner for it anyway, because we weren't here.
Okay.
June 27?
I see, yeah. Yeah. I have no recollection of who was when, so.
We need the one day where we're all in to get all of them.
I think you were the only one that was. Kevin, you were in the video.
June 27?
Second meeting in June.
Second meeting in June 27.
After school, sorry.
Yeah.
I must have posted the wrong video.
I think I was in June 27.
I think so.
Well, we don't have it, so we'll do it next time.
I like you. I like.
And maybe we can get the August ones in there as well. All right, so as I mentioned before, the village board yesterday did approve a resolution to amend the fee schedule for fee and lieu of parks for subdivisions. They amended that to up to 3,500. And yeah, so that's now in place, so it's something we don't have to worry about not being there in the future.
So that is in.
So.
Six Belvedere? Right?
No, not a park, a park. Like a pleasant public park. Yeah, yeah. So not parking park.
Okay.
Yeah.
But this is in reference to Belvedere?
It was relevant to the Belvedere application, but it is broadly relevant to any subdivision request that comes to a force in the future that applicants are permitted to request, similar to the parking referral, or sorry, the parking waiver. They're able to request that we refer them to the village board to pay a fee in lieu of providing the required park when they involve subdivision. Now, just like the parking waiver, we will pass along our recommendation to the village board. So if we feel like it's merited, if we don't feel it's a merited, or we're not sure, or whatever it happens to be, we'll pass that along and the village board will decide to reject, or accept, or modify the fee in accordance with the application.
Okay. Is that, that's 2500 dollars per lot?
Yes. It's, I think the language is like per lot or unit, yeah. Yeah. Anything else you think is relevant to add?
No, I don't think so. I think for that, actually, the code may be worded such that it's actually up to the board whether or not to require the recreation space for the payment of the fee.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
This board?
Right. Yeah, okay.
Right, the application can be denied if we deem that it's part of the plan, sorry, right? We say we don't want to give flavor.
I don't know that you could necessarily go that path. I think it's just up to you whether, based on the application, you feel that it should be the park for the fee.
Right, okay.
And if it's, you know, if it's a subdivision with a small lot, like 6 East Belvedere, and the board somehow voted to require recreation space, I don't know that that would stand up to a challenge, I think. In that case, you would more or less have to require that they or allow them to pay the fee in lieu.
Right, okay.
The amount is up to 3,500?
Per unit or lot?
But is there a range, like 1,000 to 3,500, or 2,000 to 3,500? Because.
No, we're at the village board's discretion, if we refer to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Village Board, I think historically, they've been pretty good at taking fees where appropriate and not where not. Good hands there for whatever comes out. All right, we can move on to the zoning board's request for comment for 25 Fair Street. So I think we've got some information. Abigail has it now. So I'll give everyone the context, because 25 Fair is adding an accessory structure and there's a number of mainly property kind of setback violations that the structure would potentially induce. And so the zoning board is entertaining variances for those. So I can give everyone a quick summary that Eric shared with us to help kind of craft our understanding. So the property has an usual shape, creating ambiguity about what counts as front and side yards. At the workshop yesterday, the CBA arrived at an interpretation slightly different than what appears in the chief enforcement officer's referral. Front yard setback is not a concern, because we concluded that the front minimum setback area here is solely the first 25 feet of the driveway, or the driveway meets street. I believe this property has a long, narrow driveway that connects it to Fair Street. Yeah. I live on the street, so I walk by it all the time. The property line adjacent to the new garage is the side boundary. In this light, the plan presents three violations proposed. Number one, the proposed garage would be in front of the front plane of the house, violating 134-7.b6a. The proposed one-story addition would extend into the southerly minimum setback area, side setback area, and would also extend into the minimum rear setback area. Basically nestled into a corner, violating two parts of the setbacks. This property is very secluded. You can't see the house from the street. It's nestled actually behind other properties. You can see the current carport.
I want to say that may be the first and second page, so I'm not sure what exactly the adjustment for, but the.
A lot of the property quarters, one of the high slices in the northern state subdivision. Don't retain any more, but that division is a little bit. Does anyone have any questions?
Is there another folder?
I think this may be, this may be the folder that I'm missing.
I don't think I have the big picture, so to speak. Thank you.
I have, is there another? Survey, is there?
Oh, one of these? Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Probably also worth looking at the book, the book table on the first page, see how things are changing. There is a substantial change to the footprint of the structure, but it's still well below the maximum 30% lawn coverage.
My crazy, is that roof over the hand going, like touching the bench?
Yeah, I think what they measured is at a foot. A foot and two inches away from the boundary.
That's different than when it says the house, and then on here, it says, is that you're asking for a minimum side yard setback, and that's a point, it's a point two inches. But on here, side yard setback says proposed 4 feet. All of them should have some sort of discrepancy. Right, it's on the front of this.
It could be the roof over the head, wouldn't be the wall.
Yeah, I don't.
There's also pending amendments, I think, from the, I think, small adjustments, right, from the zoning board's number, Abigail. There, we're waiting on, there are some small changes, right, to, do you happen to remember what they were?
No. I wanted to, I think it's just the first two pages, nothing.
What's this page?
It should say CBA zero.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so those are the ones that we're looking at, so maybe there's some small changes to the.
One quarter and two inches is much.
Per side?
Uh, let's see here, four. This is residential, I think, so I think it's actually bigger than. Oh no, the side yard setback is 10, yeah. But actual, actually, the post here says one foot two inches for the side yard, so I think that's at least 50%. And this.
But this is, this one here says for like three inches from the side yard, so that's why.
Yeah, that's the referral, I imagine that.
Okay.
That. So that would be the oldest of the documents.
Okay, you're right, because this is October 8th, so, all right, so disregard the numbers here, you need the numbers. But we're not sure, because she said this one's going to change.
Yeah.
CBA zero and CBA one.
Yeah.
So, sorry, once again, which numbers should we be looking at these numbers?
We're looking at these numbers, I think, I think that there there may be some small amendments based on. And for what it's worth, we can wait, like the CBA hearing on this is not until November 16.
Yeah, might be 12.
Well, anyway, it's in November, we still have another planning board meeting this month, where we could revisit. So we can hold off on making comments until we have updated documents.
Okay, I would just like to get clarification of the, if it is as that suggests maybe the roof overhang, from what it looks here, is what is the one foot two inches where the actual structure ends on the property line. You know, because that, to me, would make it different.
Yeah.
Still seems to really address it.
It does, but I don't know what is on this other side here, on the comment, but since the stone between wall looks like it's pretty, if I'm looking this wrong, it looks further out than the property starts on the other side, so I'm sure it's.
Yeah.
Because it might be a big enough wall where it might not matter to the people who are on the side, but we see their comments.
Not matter. Still there.
Build their property, yeah, still that. Some.
Is. I'm assuming the retaining wall belongs to subdivision, but.
Yeah, that's, what do you call it?
North Gate? Northern Gate, Northern.
Yeah. Yeah, I think right now, it looks like there is a fair amount of foliage between the driveway and the retaining wall. Like maybe some arborvitaries.
Right. And it just seems like, if it's only the roof overhang for the garage, and the garage seems like it is setback further, I'd like to find out what that is. So, I mean, yeah, there's still some questions, but for me, I would like to review it again.
Okay. All right, we'll table it until we get updated, updated draft, and we'll revisit it next time.
And did you see there's a comment for this as well, or this is just for us to comment on, it's not anybody else, this is for them?
Yeah, so this is what we're being asked to comment on, so we're going to table it for now. Thank you. All right. On to old business. So we've got a public hearing that is ongoing for 143, 145 Main Street. I think we have Pan here with us. Hi again, Pan.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, good. Thanks for joining us again. We received your updated presentation, but it seemed like there were no longer any lighting plans on there. Can you help explain that to us?
The first page, I think, there's a, there's a light on the wall.
Oh.
Oh, they're on the.
They're up high.
They're up high, I see.
Right.
Okay.
That's from where it was below, what you said, yeah.
And so is that something that the modification of the building owner has allowed, is going to be connected to electrical, or?
Yes.
They are? They're going to be wired lights?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, because I was traveling outside, I just got an email from Abigail, so I marked the trash location on the last page of the survey. I'm not sure, did she have enough time to print it out?
I did not have enough time to print it out, but I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Oh, Wi-Fi. All right, I've got, I got it, I got it here, anyone who wants to come on. Yeah, okay, so we've got.
No was there?
Driveway entrance, I think, and then parking is back here, and you're saying that the pink oval here is where trash.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So the front sign.
The front side already reduced the size to one-third.
Okay. All right, so the front signs are going to be in the window, and they're going to be one-third the total height of the window, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
So the, just because we have two places where lights are mentioned on the kind of site plan drawing that you have, there's solar lights listed on the ground, those are not going to be in place, confirmed?
Yeah, no ground solar lights.
Can I get into the trash with? Is it going to place that due to the, has this just parking? Right in the middle, at the back just far as.
Yeah. Trouble understanding how the parking works and how the trash works, so. From the diagram.
Or maybe you can say, where is the best way to put the trash bin? So we just said there. They said they don't, they won't have lots of trash, because it's not a restaurant. So ideally, they would like to share the cost with the first-floor store. Wherever they put their trash bin, they just use that spot, and they share the cost if they have.
Sure, and is the indication here that the, in the pink dot, is where that the ground floor business currently keeps their trash?
Yeah, because the last time when I visited the Coatspring, the first floor is nobody there, so I couldn't get chance to talk to the first-floor owner, so I don't know, where did she put her trash there?
Did you, do we know if if they have trash at all?
I don't, I don't, I don't know where did they put their trash bin there, but I said, this is not a big problem for us. We just can listen to your suggestion, wherever is a convenient or easy way to put the trash bin, then we just leave there.
I think the concern of the board is that there is a fair amount of parking in the back, which we would like to make sure is taken advantage of. So I think the important part is that the trash is located in a way that preserves as much parking as possible. That, is that fair summary? Yeah. So that would be the, that would be the board's preference. Put in a place that preserves, preserves the parking as much as possible.
So do you think the red dot I put there is a good?
It's a little, it's a little hard to tell without also having parking spaces drawn on this diagram to know whether or not it's in place, I think. Generally, I would say.
Okay, did you have a public hearing for the first-floor store? Or maybe anybody can recall, where do they put their trash bins? So I just, we just put there as well. And then we just pay half money to the first-floor owner, so maybe it's okay?
That is, that's not, that's not up to us, that's something you would have to that tenant and the building owner?
So Pan, I think, I mean, what I personally like to see is, I'd like to see a diagram of the entire back to scale. Be hand-drawn, you don't, you don't have to get them up there, but I'd like to see like, who has what parking spaces? And exactly where the bin is going to be for scale and.
Yeah, since this survey page is big, I couldn't find some printer to print it out and enjoy it, as I'm not an architecture. And so do you have any suggestions, so where to put the trash bin?
That's not up for us to suggest.
Well, we can make suggestions about where, yeah, yeah, we can make suggestions about where, I think like.
Yeah, I would, I would say in the corner, where you have, there's a picture here, right by the trees, the corner there, that seems like that maybe is.
It's close, I think it's close to where you have, it's close to where you've drawn. What I would say is that, like, the oval you have here is very large, it's basically, I think it's the size of a car. So just, just to be precise about exactly where you plan on putting them, I think this this survey is perfectly fine base. this, uh, survey is a, is perfectly fine base. And, uh, draw two little, uh, little trashcan-sized squares about, about where you want.
You mean I draw two little trashcan, um, that's a survey page?
Yes, that's, that's perfectly fine. And then if you could also just, um, put the, uh, approximately where the parking is, I think is, uh, basically on that back row, and, and the number of spaces that, that are there, a number of cars that would fit, that would be super helpful as well.
Right, and then, but how many spaces would be for your business, and how many would be for the other business?
I think two or three is fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm now entirely forgotten what are.
So for this, uh, particular application, you need two spaces.
You need two. And so I think probably, probably fine.
I think you have it.
Yeah, yeah, I think we just need, we just need to.
We need, we.
We need to draw it out.
Yeah, we need to draw it out, because we need a reference point for later if this ever would have come up, you know? This is a public complaint, and we, we, we try to, we want to deal with it, so.
I think, uh, um, if you can get the survey with up, updated location of the two trashcans, and the approximate location of the parking spaces, just little lines, it doesn't have to be super detailed, it'd just be like, here's a, here's a line separating one space from another.
Can, because I'm, uh, I'm not a good painter, uh, can I just draw two, I'm not a good painter, can I just draw two round spots on the survey, like that stands for the trash bin?
Yeah, you could just use a, a sharpie or a pen or something to, to draw in the survey.
I think, I think she thinks she doesn't have access to a printer, so.
Uh, if you can edit it as a PDF, uh, I don't know, anything.
Mm-hmm, okay, I would do that.
Okay.
Maybe we'll have like a a graphic that's gonna stand up if something.
Well, the, the, yeah, I mean, for us to actually approve and stamp, we need an actual, we need something to stamp.
Exactly.
So, we're, we're.
It has to be to scale, I mean, I need, like, with the parking spaces, it's measured out. Turning circle.
It needs. It, I don't think it needs to be a, the, the, the requirement is not an engineering spec.
Right, right.
So I don't know that the drawing necessarily needs to be to scale, but as long as the drawing represents the approximate dimensions, uh, I think that's okay.
So if she wanted to just draw on this, and then go get copies, and she could either
Yeah.
scan it or just actually mail it, right?
Yeah.
That would work too, right?
Yeah.
Um, maybe give her, maybe have, have, have Abigail give, I don't know, can we give an example?
Um.
Yeah, also, do you have other, um, approved projects? So how did they draw their trashcan and the, and the public, uh, uh, and the parking spot?
Um, so actually, you can go on the Village website, and you can look at previous applications. Um, there's a number of other ones that are probably good examples. Um, in fact, uh, just down the street, uh, one, um, so that's, what was one fifty? One fifty, no, one.
You talking about the deli?
No, we're talking about, uh.
The, um, the old Wildville.
Yeah, the old Wildville, what is that one? That's one, one.
Was that the, what, um, was that forty-six Main, the, the retail store?
No, 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 the, uh, the one that, the one that River Architects was, was here to represent.
Uh, one, uh, thirty-five or whatever.
Yeah.
One thirty-three, one thirty-five, yeah.
One thirty, one thirty-three, one thirty-five Main, um, there's, uh, on the Village of Cold Spring website, under the planning board, there is, uh, a new section called, uh, archived.
Okay.
Or, uh, you, you made a new section on the website.
Yes, I did.
You remember what it was called?
Archived application.
Archived application, so if you go there, you look at some of the material, the site plan materials for one thirty-three, one thirty-five.
Okay.
That, that was done by an architect, so it's, it's very nice, but the, the important part is that they call out exactly where on the, on the survey, uh, the parking is, and where, uh, the, the trash goes.
Okay, yeah, good to learn, it's good to learn, mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, does it mean we have to go to next public hearing? Or I just find and, uh, and, uh, follow the sample to do it, then I can email to Abigail?
Yes, well, we, we'll, um, I think that we're headed toward an adjournment of the public hearing for today, and we'll come back, um, later in October with your updated version, and hopefully we'll be able to get to, um, a vote at that point.
So what, so have to go to next round public hearing?
Yes.
Uh, when is the time? Wh- which day?
Two weeks from today, uh, so. The tenth, so the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I see, thank you.
So if you can provide the, the drawing with the parking and the trash in time for the next meeting, the board might be able to vote at that meeting, and that might be the last meeting yet to come to.
Yeah, um, please try to get it to us, um, at least, it would, it would be helpful if at least a week in advance.
Okay.
So by next Thursday, that would be great.
Okay, I see, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just wanna reiterate, you can do it by hand, so you'll see the other application, but you could just draw on this particular map that you have here, and then make copies of that and send that to Abigail. You know, scan a copy if you want, and email it to her.
Okay, thank you.
Um, if I may make a motion to adjourn the public hearing for one thirty, forty-three, one forty-five Main Street.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing for one forty-three, one forty-five Main Street.
Second?
A second.
All favoring? All right, all right, we'll revisit next time. Okay, uh, new business, forty-seven Parrot Street. Welcome to the planning board.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Yeah, um, feel free to come up to the table.
Sure.
Um, so, um, it would be great, uh, just for you to walk us through what you want.
I, uh, I apologize to kinda have maybe more info there than you need.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's okay, it's usually, uh.
Most of the old, um, oh, oh, one, and then one oh one point one, I think.
Okay.
Um, which is, I think, first and fifth.
Yep.
Um, so basically, so I could kind of walk you through the site plan?
But I just wanna orient myself, so we're on.
So it's Parrot Street, on, on the first page, you can see it's forty-seven.
Gotcha.
Outside of the historic district, um.
Okay, okay.
It's a beautiful old, uh, kind of a par- partially, partially stone, partially wooden, but, um, so on one oh one point one, uh, everything in the, the crosshatch.
Yeah.
Is existing, um, the, excuse me, the, um, portion of both of the street. These are, we mean a half-story house. Uh, no, well, there's a little bit of work proposed, but nothing I think that's relevant. Um, and then the rear, in the rear, is, in the, in the crosshatch is, um, an existing, uh, stone garage.
Gotcha.
Um, that you can see is, uh, a, a little bit over the, it's about a little more than three feet over, um.
I mean, does this, does the property go all the way through to West Bank Street, or?
No.
No, it doesn't, okay.
It's a little bit larger than the average, even. Um, it's a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, uh. And so the proposed, the proposed, uh, accessory dwelling, um, with, uh, no, uh, no bulk modifications on that existing portion, um. And, uh, and then, um, in addition, uh, so it's a little bit more, have a little bit of, kind of a little more living area, and then a bedroom and bathroom, uh, towards the back, um, but all, all within the, um, the required setbacks for an accessory, um, an accessory building.
Gotcha.
And so there's a zoning conformance chart on that first sheet that shows. It's really just, it's really just that existing, um, mall, uh, encroachment, um, and, I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing building, it's like fifteen to eight, approximately fifteen-inch stone walls, so even if it wasn't, even though it's not in the historic district, it is a real shame to do anything with it, it's a beautiful.
Yeah.
A new construction. Um, and then you can see there's no, I think everything else is conforming, including the, the lot coverage.
Um, oh, interesting, I see, I see what you're looking at, so in order to maintain the the side setback, you've, you've pulled, you've pulled the new structure back from the side, the side lot behind where the stone structure is, I got you.
That's been my understanding in terms of when working through the new code, is that basically there's no change to the, there's no, there's no expansion of the existing, um, non-conforming.
Yes, yeah.
No expansion of the existing non-conforming.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think, I think that's my read too.
I should have introduced myself, my name's.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I've been in front of all the other boards, but not.
Um, so a couple of things about this one, um, I believe that this, uh, the code allows for an expedited site plan review if the board deems it appropriate for accessory structure. Um, that basically just means that we can, uh, forego public hearing and our approval, and be, and be, um, content with, uh, a kind of known and, and articulated set of design documents that are like building elevation, design, parking, lighting, and signage.
Oh, I didn't mention, I should have mentioned the park, I didn't mean to interrupt, I did, the parking is shown in the two spots, I should have pointed that out. There's, there's kind of an, there's an existing driveway.
Oh, those, those are the grays.
Two gray, yeah. I apologize for not pointing that out.
John, anything you guys wanna add about the excited?
I don't believe the public hearing can be waived, actually, I'm just confirming in the code. It does say, under the accessory apartment section, that a public hearing in accordance with section one thirty-four sixteen point one E is required. So I just have to check that section that it references.
Oh, interesting, so even though the, the, it says it, it's eligible for expedited site plan, which says explicitly public hearings may be waived except for new construction.
Okay, uh, yeah, let me.
So maybe there's an, it might be conflict there?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, well, we'll, we'll get that figured out exactly, what the, what the process is that we're gonna have to, to go through, but I think, um, right now, we'll just ask questions about what's going on, and.
But you, you're implying it's a possibility you could vote tonight, or you could vote in the future?
I think we need, we need clarity on whether or not we can avoid the public hearing or not, um, so, um, which means the soonest, if we get clarity on that, and that is in fact true, then the soonest we could vote to approve would be next, uh, in, in two weeks. Um, if, um, we could also preemptively try to go to public hearing as a way of, like, the worst-case scenario, you're on, you know, under the gun.
Yeah.
Then, um, we, we find out that we do need a public hearing, and then we haven't scheduled one.
Yeah.
And then, then we're, then we're out in, in November.
We're in a, we're in a, you know, as always, it's, you know, as soon as possible would be good, but I don't think two weeks is gonna change. I mean, I think that would, it seems like we, it makes sense, anyway, you, you can, I don't, that's your
Yeah.
purview, but two weeks is, is fine.
Okay, okay, so maybe what we'll.
But what you're saying is it requires a public hearing, and.
It will push the public hearing into November.
Right, so in two weeks, we'll let you know whether we have expedited, or then from then on, you're gonna have to have a public hearing, which will be in November.
Or there could be a public hearing in two weeks, or that.
No, that's what, that's what.
There's a, there's a requirement, so when we do public hearings, there's a requirement that, that the public be notified ten days in advance.
Yeah.
We have to schedule it, and we have to post it, and you have to post a sign there, and.
Sure, okay.
Um, so there's, there's a, there's a bunch of steps that we have to go through, including mailing, and, and timing is, I mean, kind of important.
Right.
Um, and so, uh, that basically means that we could attempt to see if we can get the board to a place where we can comfortable scheduling a public hearing this evening for next time as a preemptive step, or we could wait, uh, to find out whether or not we need one, and, um, and then maybe next time, just do it without public hearing.
What, uh, section were you looking at, Jesse?
This was the definition section of, of expedited.
Yeah, so the, the section specifically pertaining to accessory, uh, structure apartments, um, does say that a public hearing is required.
Interesting. So it's basically saying, ex, well, then what is the, what is the nature of expedited in that scenario?
An expedited public hearing, uh, limits your review to access parking, lighting, and exterior building modifications, so it's basically what you do in practice for change of uses, uh, you're not doing all of the stormwater and, and that kind of stuff, uh, like you would be with a, a ground-up, uh, new construction type of preview.
So would you, just because we're gonna be talking about this in a bit, uh, would you say that the code is in, in a little bit of conflict with itself here, or would you say that the general definition of expedited site plan review holds, but it is being?
In this case, overridden with an additional requirement. Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that.
You think the latter is true, okay? Okay. Well, that answers that question, um, so then I think we should ask questions and see if we can get to, uh, a completed application tonight, then.
Can you, could you educate me? What, what is that square?
Oh, that's, that's a, an existing slight, uh, uh, step in the, in the interior. It's a very, it's a confusing, um, that's just an existing, that's just an existing floor plan, but, you know, it might not be relevant to the.
Oh, it's like a step down, I see.
But that's just on the in, in.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and in terms of, um, the pool and the tub, that's all new?
No, that all, everything, except, uh, that all, that's all existing, that's all the exhibit.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, and it's in the application, but, you know, I know that there's gonna be, there's, there actually is an existing pool fan. I know we'll need, um, an alarm on the door, but the only, the only new, um, in terms of like, uh, the only new structure that's not a modification of existing is, is this, uh, the lighter gray rectangle towards the back.
Yeah.
Every, everything else is, is there.
Uh, and what's the height of that addition?
So the, the height is, the existing is fifteen, which I know, which I think is the, is the, is the, um, maximum, and then the addition, uh, you know, I, it's fun, I don't know, it's funny, but I didn't actually measure it, because I, all I did was draw it below.
I see, I see.
But it's, I can actually measure it.
It's a couple of people, or.
Yeah, because we're, we're leaving that existing, we, we didn't wanna modify that existing, um, uh, roof, it's, it's a, it's a nice slate roof, so we're gonna kind of tuck behind it. But I can do it quick, it's a, it's approximately fourteen and a half feet for the addition. It's approximately fourteen and a half feet for the addition. I can add that to the. Um you can see that um on two oh one point two shows kind of how it toughs under.
Yeah.
For the height, yeah, fourteen and a half.
So with the um. So this, the 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 old structure becomes. Drive, but it should come from the garage, is that right?
So there's an existing house, an existing garage. And and the existing driveway.
Yeah.
And after completion, there would be. It's not actually even used as a garage. The doors are not functional, but that's what it was built as. It's kind of like a storage area.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's like technically was still, obviously at some point it was a garage.
Yes.
And then after construction, it would just be the existing house. Would remain and then the existing garage would then be the accessory, the existing garage plus addition. So. And then there'd be two parking spaces in the existing driveway.
I see. I think I was confused by. Two, uh A two oh one point one that just la- labels. It re- references garage, garage elevation. So I wasn't sure if that was indicating use or.
To the extent that it matters, there's, it's not even really used. It would need some work to even be a garage. It doesn't have a slab.
Yeah.
So I guess it would almost, it's almost like a glorified shed.
Yeah.
But it was built as a garage and it's it's a, it's a robust stru- structure. Has two garage doors.
And um what's uh what's the intended use generally of the accessory apartment?
You know, I think it's actually a perfect. You know, I don't know, if you read, if you read the intent of the code, it's like a, it's it's really like an aging in place.
Yeah.
For the the client um parent. So like a multi-generational living kind of.
I think.
If I, if I understand sort of the intent of like. Accessory structure type. Additions to the code, that it's kind of, it feels like it fits almost exactly in what, sort of, it's it's turning what's sort of an unused space into a. Makes it a multi-generational living.
Uh it's sort of like, it's sort of my my reading of the code. I think um. The the structure of the of chapter one hundred, short term rental also kind of reinforces that, this idea that.
Yeah.
That uh you know, the these are the additional accessory apartments are really intended for multi-generational living and not for. Necessarily uh. Sources of income.
Yeah, that's not, I, it's a, there's a, there're clients here, but that's that's the intent.
That's great.
I I just think this is a village philosophical level. Comment from the village that I think it's really important that we actually do increase. It also in perspective, the six velvety subdivision that we increase the density of of housing here. I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
You know, we want to be, while preserving the character of the village, we want to be. Guide ourselves against not being N B and 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 actually be able to fit more people in. That's a simple factor solving, like. You know, one of the key crises in our society, which is housing.
Yeah.
So I think, I love this.
Yeah.
The fact that you've taken like great steps to. Correct setbacks and so forth, like everything is to code. Um I agree, you should not have to like do anything about the existing structure, leave it. It's good.
Yeah.
That's would be barbaric to to remove that. So um you get grandfathered there. And then you've taken care of the parking too.
Yep, no comments. I I just think that at this point, we just gotta wait for the. See if there's any public comment on it. I mean, I think this is just.
Sure.
Give us all the information that we need.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um because. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off.
No, please, ask a question.
Um and I'm not, I guess this almost, I don't want it to be off the record, because by my read.
We're we're all, we're all being recorded right now. We posted on YouTube, yeah.
So my question is, from what I, if I, my intent here. In reading the code is that it's an allowed use and. It is, it is compliant. I'm guessing that's why I didn't get a zoning, a referral, but it's compliant. So. What could, I don't intend that someone would, but is there something someone could say that would say you couldn't do that? If it's, if it's allowable by.
It might be, it might be uh modifications to the way, maybe a neighbor is concerned about. Uh you know, there's now, there's, there's more structure in in the height and. There's a, give them a chance to comment about what that, you know, what that means for them or. What what uh the impact of obstruction might be for such such a substantial project. We can't imagine all the ways in which someone might have. An issue, but part of the point of a public hearing. Is to make it to where we don't have to imagine. You could just literally ask people, hey, are are you impacted by this? What are the ways in which you're impacted? How does that change our understanding of the project and the things that could be done? And for the most part. Not this project, not in in particular, but there's a, there's a, we're trying to allow. To respect the rights of all property owners to do what is legally around, allowed. While also um navigating the broader needs of the village. And so we're trying to arbitrate that as best we can.
Okay.
Um.
And part of this is me getting, because I'm very clear, because I've done it a lot, I'm very clear about what it's like to be. At the H D R B.
Yeah.
And I'm very clear about what. The, in terms of zoning, like, you know, is, are you over the setback or are you not? So just trying. Some, because I can see that I would maybe modify this. What I could see is might be helpful, because I do have more photographs. I do have.
Photographs are always helpful.
Because I didn't realize, so it's a little more present, I can do a little bit more of a presentation. I actually have most of it, I can just read.
Yeah.
I think, and at the, at the, if if you're interested, at the very end are some, I think some exterior renderings, but. I can, I can modify that for the next meeting, so it's clear.
Yeah.
Or maybe the the drawings go out for the public hearing? If so, I would, maybe I can submit some.
Yeah, no, nothing gets sent down.
Sent to the public.
This is notice.
There's a notice and then we post uh material, application material on the website.
I can pare down these, some of the extraneous and then add in some photos and some renderings that I have.
Be helpful, yeah.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
I feel like this is a pretty complete application.
Yeah.
Um.
It's time.
And uh I'm I'm happy for us to go ahead and schedule a public hearing next time.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for next meeting. October twenty fourth.
That's well, is is that could give enough time for the.
Well, that that could be, you know, that's, that's a question, because it has to, does the notice have to go in tomorrow morning? I think that's.
The the way the newspaper uh requires, so.
Yeah, it might be up to, we had to have that asked. Sorry, I will take back my motion, because we still have.
I think in the past, we kind of run into trouble trying to uh fit within that timeline, so it might. Be more feasible to to schedule it for four weeks from today.
That sounds, that sounds more more realistic.
And that'll give them until next Friday to do the public notice, which would be this following Friday. Oh, yeah, it would, it either the two Fridays they could do, right?
Well, this Friday, it won't, it can't be done, because it goes in for Friday to be posted for Wednesday. So that would give them. Eight days, nine counting the dates posted, something like that, like just shy of ten.
So when would they have to have it in for our meeting in November, right? That's the question.
Um, well, I think we have, we have everything we need. I think that like, what it means is that Abigail will. And uh we'll get together the. The um addresses to note, to notify. Uh and we'll s- we'll just submit by next, the notice by next, there, by next Friday for, for the November meeting.
Oh, for November, yeah.
November seventh, right, so you need all the, November seventh is, I think, the next, that's the first Thursday. I'm sorry, second, so it's fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will not be here.
Don't want to be here?
Uh I will be here.
Depending on how much you guys in life, like the country.
I'll be in Iceland.
Alright, I'll, I will be here as well. So I think we're we're good for the fourteen.
Okay.
Fourteen.
Right? Would you like, remake your motion?
I would like to uh make a motion to uh. Prove the, schedule a public hearing for, for November fourteenth.
For forty seven.
Forty seven Parrish streets.
Second, I'll second it. On favor? Let me see you on the uh, what is it, fourteen?
Yes.
Yeah, fourteen.
But you have to have, um you have to send up, now notices.
So we'll, Abigail will help coordinate that. Um so we'll get to your addresses and then there'll, there'll be some certified mail and. That'll be it.
I will be here the fourteenth. I thought, and she's for some reason, I thought it was this, said the seventh and.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, yes.
Alright. Uh you all welcome to stick around. You also can go home. Okay. Alright. Um alright, so I think um. The last bit is um. Discussion of uh of um basically uh yesterday, um the mayor. Uh in the village board meeting. Mentioned that they were um going to be making revisions to chapter one hundred, short term rental. And uh because amendments to the code are relatively involved, it's a relatively involved process that requires. Public hearing, um usually. Like request of public comment uh is open for longer periods and uh. So it's, it's enough of an, of a, of a process that uh. She asked if the planning board had uh was interested in writing a memo for. Central modifications that uh might make our job easier or uh things that we've noticed in the code that are inconsistent. Um I've been kind of compiling a list as we've been progressing this year. And I'm happy to talk through some of those items that I, that I put up. Um I think there's, I also have no idea about the, about. Whether or not they're good at, like, from a legal perspective, they're reasonable, so maybe not, and you can, you can weigh in on on those as well. But if folks would like, I I can kind of talk through some of the things that I've, that I've been thinking about. Um and then. Uh maybe for next time, everyone can kind of think, think on. Uh things that they've noticed that are frustrating or hard to, hard to use or things like that. Um. So uh, let's see here. So one of the things that came up, it actually, it wasn't, it didn't come before us, it was just a, it was a. There was something that came, like, to me as a village asked for. Uh a, I guess a. Basically a uh. Asked for the, the code enforcement officer, the planning board chair and. Village attorney to weigh in on this, the. The viability of a particular um modif- like uh turning of of a, of a lot into multi. Into like adding more units to a, to a single lot. Um and it was in residential old. Uh and it was a little ambiguous in the code about. About, it's like, you had to kind of do kind of an inferential step to the, to to realize that. Uh what they were proposing was actually multifamily. It was actually multifamily dwelling. Uh uh and which is disallowed, it's a disallowed use in uh on R O. Um so it was um, some, some question about whether or not we could be more explicit about. The allowance of more than one single family structure on a lot, because they were, they were trying to make an argument that. Each of the structures itself was a single family structure. And therefore was not, it was not a multifamily, it was not a multifamily unit. Um but they were like four buildings on the, on the property. So they were. Trying to say there's four single family buildings on the property and uh which is not, what they were trying to argue was not multifamily. Um so there would basically be a suggestion that kind of be a little bit more explicit about the relationship between. Uh single family structures on a lot. And multifamily, the multifamily designation, that'd be kind of like tightening up of that language. Another um related to, I think we kind of this with the deli. Um by the way, John, feel free to jump in with any comments you have on any of these. So um. The current code. Lumps a number of subuses into the restaurant category. Um but the parking requirement seems out of line with some of these. The deli kind of came to mind. With respect to that, just like. You know, like uh it's probably similar to like a slice counter or something else where you, where. The expectation is not that people are gonna be coming in and dining for an hour and a half. And that there, and there's a, there's a big dining area. And so just, um I was wondering if, if perhaps. Some sub designation of like restaurants, small restaurant, large, or or it kind of like subdivides the uses. Yeah, I don't know. I got like, um I don't know, just like li- literally lump deli and. Like, I don't know, like, exactly how granular we, we would want them to be, but just something that's like slightly more granular than restaurant.
You know, it makes sense for, it might even be based on table, um you know, table service or something, if there's table service there. As opposed to a counter where you go and sit there and and do something, you know?
John, do you know of any useful designations between like that might help delineate between?
Some codes um might uh distinguish between restaurants and counter service uh food establishments or fast food even. They might have, you know, the definition, it might be where uh. Uh you know, it's under a certain amount of tables inside or it says food is primarily um. Takeout, I don't know, I'd have to look, but it's, it's pretty common for codes to distinguish.
Alright.
I think that's, I think that's an important point too.
I agree.
That's, you can't, it's not a one size fit all, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I think we're not, we're not trying to like make the parking table giant, which is, I think that it was just a. It was a, it was a point of tension for that application, or just like, it was just like, didn't feel like the right fit.
Right, and it's, I think, from what our perspective was, we didn't want to set a precedent, but you know, it's a different, each, each one's different. And it would be good to have the code to fall back on to say, yeah, this is, this is this use and this is why we're doing this. As opposed to somebody else coming in and saying, why do we need six parking places when they want to have a big restaurant with, with fifty tables, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cool, um alright, um this one, I was curious, I felt like a lot of the applications we had. This year. Were, some of them were really just. The dead simple, like no structural changes, just changing from one use to another. And um I felt like for a lot of those, like they, they came in, they saw the application, they went straight to public hearing. Public hearing went, it was just very boring and straightforward, and there would, you know, we didn't have a lot of modification.
Right.
I was wondering if, if it would, if maybe there would be, it would be reasonable to designate. Um applications that are, don't have structural or external changes to the site. Uh be allowed, not required, but allowed to, to do expedited. Site plan review, um which would allow us to forego a public hearing. Does that seem?
I think it's interesting. It seems like it's kind of been the trend that uh, you know, there are too many comments for just simple change of use. Applications, so yeah, I think that makes sense.
I mean, I'll just say with, with the um.
the home goods store.
Yeah.
Brass monkey.
Brass monkey, I love that. Like there was, which I thought was, I liked, I really liked the proposal, but, but the public comments were around, you know, is their parking covered? Is there gonna be more, more traffic? Is there gonna be deliveries?
Truck deliveries, yeah.
Truck deliveries and so forth, so I wouldn't want to muzzle the public necessarily unless we, unless we can cover it in the code and enforce the code.
Well, I think maybe, would it reassure you that it would not be required that we do expedite it? It would just be an option, we could make the decision on a case by case basis, like, oh, like, I'm worried about the impact of, and it really just comes down to our ability to to just make a good judgment based on whatever the criteria are that are in, that are in the code, so.
Yeah, well, let's be careful because there may be several, there may be, there may be different kinds of business, there may be business types where there's a change of business too, classification where, like, the neighbors are really gonna want to know about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not, they may not even want to comment, but they could be given, given the opportunity to.
So maybe sometimes this kind of thing is accomplished with like, kind of flavor text in the code where it's like we're, we're pushed to consider the scale of use, the scale of use change of like, oh, if there's gonna be a hundred times more people there than there were before, they're gonna be, even if there's no structural changes, it's like, obviously a substantial change in the traffic flow or there's a substantial change in the, in the, like, the sound that comes from the place, whatever happens to be, or the hours of operation. Those all seem like very reasonable things to say, like, okay, this is, this is a substantial change from the previous use. So we should, we're on the side of caution and, and and have an act, and have a public, have a full public hearing. Does that seem like a, like a reasonable set of whole kind of qualifications, like something about the, the, the degree of deviation of the, of the use or something like that?
I think you could even just, you know, leave it to the board's absolute discretion. For whatever reason you can articulate at the time, if you want to waive it, you can, if not, then you don't have to.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, like, Ben brings up a good point, if one of us, one of us should be able to pick out, hey, this might be a problem. Or some neighbors, we really should let them have a common period.
Yeah.
If one of, if, if none of us think that, then I think it's pretty reasonable that we can forego the meeting. Because I think we're, we're pretty diligent about what we, what we allow for.
I, I do like adding some guidance in, in the, in the code, I think, like like adding something about the scale, the scale of use change.
Yeah.
Might be just like it's not, it just means that it's a thing that we have to consider, right? And, 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 and then we're like us and any future boards are kind of forced to, to do a, that little bit of extra like sanity check of like, did the scale, did the scale of use change in any particular dimension?
One flag would be, that's so obvious, I think, but if, if this, if it's a change of use where there can be potential for increase, an increase in, in traffic or vehicle traffic noise or then, then there should be a issue, issue of a public hearing.
Okay, I think I can, I think I can wordsmith that into, into a suggestion. Because again, we're not, we're kind of giving, we're giving suggestions to the board about things that they will consider modifying, we're not, we're not like writing the, yeah. Made a note about having more explicit storm water management requirements in the code, given that that's more top of mind. Where do, where do folks usually kind of add that kind of thing? Is it, is it, is it kind of peppered in or do they make kind of sections that are trying to address, like, the site plan must, I actually wouldn't necessarily want a uniform requirement if they redress it, but.
Yeah, I think codes kind of vary, but ultimately it's really up to the engineer to, you know, look at that application and say
Yeah.
what's necessary.
But in terms of their requirement consideration, that's something that would be over, like, it's, it's certainly something top of mind for us, I guess there's way, there's, there's questions about whether or not the whether the code would be benefited from having more explicit guidance around storm water management.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm not sure, I think that's almost more of a question for the village engineer to see if, you know, they think there is any one size fits all language that could be added or whether it's just too site specific.
There is also state code around this, like that's what drives some of still more advantage. So, or should be, it's really enforced, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and usually that comes into play when you have like disturbances of an acre or more, so probably not likely to impact most of the projects that come before you guys.
Yeah. It's probably, that's only probably a marathon.
Yeah, but as, you know, as a village resident, I think it's important that even something as small as change in landscape, you know? Like if you do some landscape architecture, that that should have to be, you know, you have to make sure that, you know, it's, might not come for us, but if they're changing, if they're changing the code, I think that that should be explicitly made, because I know up on, you know, up on Cedar where there was some change in landscape of one neighbor that really caused a problem for another neighbor.
For the flow of water.
For the flow of water, and that really actually affected the whole town, so I think that that should, that should be something that it's because I, I agree, it's a really big topic and it should be addressed now if they're, if they're changing.
I think that can be kind of a tough one, because you know, then the question is who reviews, you know, those landscaping changes? I mean, do you make, somebody get site plan approval to do landscaping?
I shouldn't say landscaping, anything changed to maybe the topography or some, some sort of, like, there has to be some sort of, like, change to the, to the grade of.
I've heard of some municipalities having more explicit storm water management programs? Like where they, they offered to fund plant-like plantings that tends to, or beds that tend to absorb more groundwater and stuff like that, like, is that, those tend to be kind of separate from code considerations or?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
The six building like solution, which was to put in the big dry wells.
Yeah.
And capture and then dissipate the, the stormwater on site, I mean, that's actually state code. That's what we should all be doing. And mo- most people have their go as like under the driveway and out of the street.
Yeah.
That's what we should not be doing.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so it sounds like maybe this is, if we, if we say anything, it's more of just like, please, please consider places that storm water management might be more practically, like, addressed in the code.
Yeah, addressed in.
Yeah.
So I, I just find so much of this is implementing the code.
Yeah.
Across the board, across our entire ambient and, you know.
It's tough thing, and of course, you know, on already built structures and how things have already been, and they go around pointing out to everybody, they gotta change something, but we do have, 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 have have the ability to stop these structures from having some board.
Sure, but that's also why I like it. I get, I get, I, I do get frustrated sometimes where it's like, people want to variance for everything, and it's like, well, other people are variance, it's like, yes, but you actually do have the capacity on your land to do this or this or this, and that's in the code, so you should be doing it.
Yeah, yeah, that's the nature of variance, that they're all spot, they're all spot judgments.
They're all spot judgments, you know, I, I feel like that is in variance, like I feel like it is a, you know, a bit of a village.
Alright, I got, I got two more. So one is, I have no idea if this is even, this may not be legal under state village law. But I was curious if public notice could potentially be seven days instead of ten?
That I can check, I don't know if the state village law has a requirement or not for the notes, but I can check.
I was just feeling like, we just keep running into this tight, this tight timeline, and it's like, if our meetings were on Tuesday, we wouldn't run into it.
If we had meetings every week, we wouldn't run into it.
Right, and today was a perfect example, you're, you're right, the ten days just came back and like, ah, you know, and that difference for that thing, since it's, it's a long month.
I guess, actually, would the seven days have helped in this, in this case, because well, you, you have still been in a rush to get it in tomorrow though, right?
Yeah, but then it would actually meet that requirement, so it would be published on Wednesday and Wednesday is eight days from Thursday.
Yeah.
If I'm counting correctly, maybe nine, if we count both days.
Yeah.
Because it only goes in on Wednesday because of the weekend, we gotta put it in on Friday? So would it matter if you put it in on, now this would change, if you put it on Monday, it could go for Tuesday and count seven, I mean, go in for Thursday, count for seven days?
So the PCNR, the way, it's an automated system, it's through quick ad creator, so I think for that specific paper, they only publish on Wednesday. Which I've called them, I'm like, hey, oh my gosh, can you, can you help me? They're like, no.
Alright, so it sounded like it would, it would help, but it wouldn't necessarily solve the crunch because of.
Serious question.
I think potentially with the, I think that in that, in the spirit of that question, I think that with the option for expedited for ones that were, that we feel like are really trivial, like, this is like
Slum dunk.
Yeah.
But I also think as far as scheduling too, if we have something that's piling up and, or say, in three weeks, we have all of these things that are gonna coincide and we have like nothing to two weeks before, it'd be nice to throw something that we, you know, the, 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 the meeting before, if we could possibly do that.
But I'm just thinking from the perspective of the community where, where like.
No, I mean, it would be on the expedited one.
Somebody, but somebody wants to, you know, build something crazy like next to me or across the street from me and somebody arrives in the mail, so gets mailed, and then how many days do I have to open the envelope? I'm terrible with mail, I'm gonna open the envelope, read it, process it, think about it, and then think about how to act on it. Like, I'd only have a day or two, right?
Right, but it's registered mail, it's not like your regular mail, so I think you, most people would probably pay more attention to that mail that you get.
It's certainly, it's definitely done with.
I think, I think for me, the, the, I don't feel like in, if we're okay making a recommendation for the expedited site plan review for like, like, what, like what we discussed, I'm less I think I'm, I don't feel strongly about this, the seven versus ten. I, I, I do feel like there's some, there's some administrative crunch where it's like if our meeting was like literally a day, like a day or two earlier, getting in ten days would be no problem, because we'd have like part of a week to get our shit together and have it sent over to the PCNR by Friday. And we're just kind of like, the, the timing of our meeting and the timing of the deadlines are just like not well aligned, which I think actually is why the zoning board moved their meeting to Tuesdays, I think, so that they had more time bef- before the deadline for publication.
Right, should we do that too? I mean, if, if it's a synchronization issue, maybe, maybe that's a good idea, maybe we should, maybe we should think about doing that, rather than rather than shortening the deadline, I just, I just think that, and it's, it's also, I, I think.
It's not that we can just decide?
We're, we're processing improving things, I think, as far as planning boards go, my understanding is we're, we're getting through stuff pretty quickly, like what about the villages and counties, they, they screen things out for months, years like this.
Yeah, I don't have a good sense of that.
Yeah, it varies pretty widely, some are quick, some are all over the place, can't get anything done, but I think you guys are definitely on the clerk's side.
Well, we have to, if you were to change the meeting, then, I mean, I think, I don't think we could unanimously do that, I think it'd be up to the trustees to be able to say that.
No, I think, I think we can, we can change.
As long as it dates available, as long as that time is available and.
We want to coordinate to make sure that we weren't trying to sit on these chairs with someone else.
Tuesdays now.
Yeah, yeah, but, but we're offset a week from the zoning board, but we actually, they were on Thursday, on the, on Thursdays that we weren't here. So if Tuesday, unless this room's being occupied on Tuesdays that are offset from their meetings, then we could also use it on Tuesday. I think so maybe maybe Abigail could take that question to the clerk to find out what the availability was for Tuesdays? Same, same, basically second Tuesday and fourth Tuesday. Moving planning board meetings to the second Tuesday and second Thursday. Sorry, sorry, second Tuesday and fourth Tuesday.
Of the month.
Of the month. And they're on the first. They're, they're not on the same, I thought we were a week offset.
We just do-si-do with them, we just offset whatever.
Now she thinks.
One and third.
We could be one and third.
Right.
Well, no, you could be third and if there's a fifth, but HRB's first Tuesday, zoning is second and fourth Tuesday. You're on the same week as zoning.
What about Mondays? Let me take a Monday.
It's Monday holidays, so that's, yeah, that I think is what.
You also want to work on a holiday?
Yeah, no.
There's also Wednesday, no, the village board, the village board, it's, it's, okay, yeah, okay.
See if the HTRB is willing to, to trade with them.
Well, actually, they are considering moving or adding a meeting each month, I'm not sure what the, what the final is gonna be, but if it does work out to be so, then yeah, that would provide.
They want to move, yeah, they want to move into the whatever, the first Wednes, the, the first Thursday.
We would just trade, we would trade days with the HTRB.
If they do decide, I'm, I, I can't quite remember if it's the addition of a meeting, so meeting twice a month or moving or both, but I can definitely send them.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think they would have to notice anything, so, you know, they might be willing to just trade with you regardless, you know, if you guys explain that it's a logistics thing.
Okay.
And that might be something to do at the, before the beginning of next year, when you set the meeting schedule.
Okay. Okay, great, so do you think that's better coming, or communication from me, or would you like to?
I can do it.
Alright.
No problem.
Great. Okay, great, well, that's something. And the last one is something that came up during our Sixes Velvet Year where it was ambiguous, a little ambiguous in the code about where the dimensional table is supposed to be measured from. The chief, the code enforcement officer made a judgment call that he thought it was consistent and reasonable, the dimensional table should be measured from the edge of the street and not the center, because that's, that was the case of the Georgetown code. But I think we could just make it, or we'd have to guess, like literally just written, that that the dimensional tables are measured from the edge of the street.
That's true.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I agree, that's, that is a great point, let's get that in there.
Okay, that's what I had, folks, just think, think on other examples, read the code, see if there's anything that's.
We shouldn't read code one hundred.
It's, it's really any code, like if, if you were frustrated with how the subdivision code is written or, that's, that's what subdivision was one, ten?
I think so, yeah.
One thirty-four, yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all fair games, let me see a lot, don't kill yourselves trying, trying to do it, but I think like it's an op, it is an opportunity to make our. Uh, I think like, it's an op, it is an opportunity to make our lives easier. And to improve the experience of the public at the same time, if there are things that folks can think of, so. Think about it and we'll revisit next time. And, uh, I'll, I'll try to. Draft a. Uh, I'll put together a draft memo with my stuff, and then we can add other folks. Stuff through that stuff. Okay, great. Alright, uh. Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Two seconds?
Wait, wait, like, alright, on favor?
Hi.
Alright. Okay. Okay, everybody?
Thank you.